Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this Committee of the Whole meeting to order. It's April 1st, 2019. And I have a motion to approve the agenda moved by Councillor Rowley and seconded by Councillor Tadman that the Committee of the Whole approved the April 1st, 2019 budget meeting as presented. All those in favor? Next, we have declarations of pecuniary interest. And no one? Oh, yes. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If it comes up, the Hilton Cemetery is owned by Trinity St. Andrews United Church, and I'm a member of the Board of Trinity St. Andrews United Church, so I would declare a conflict in that regard. And did I complete that, Madam Clerk? Not this one? Thank you.
Was there anyone else? Councillor Rowley?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If there's any discussion regarding the Prescott Point Lighthouse Preservation Society, I will recuse myself from that conversation as I am on their board.
Okay. Thank you. And that's everyone. And we have no delegations. Do we have any citizen comments? I don't think so. No. Okay. So next, we have staff reports, and I'm going to turn the floor over to Linda Whittifield, and she'll give us a brief overview. We all received the second draft in our mailboxes and on our iPads. And if Linda can just kind of briefly go through some of the highlights. And then after that, we're going to have public comments, and then we'll go into deliberations. So when Linda is done, you can ask questions of clarification. Okay?
Thank you very much. So your budget book has several items in it. The executive summary starts on page three, and that shows all of the changes that were made by council in advance of today's meeting. I don't think I'll go through the list. We are all aware of what they are. But at the end of the meeting on March 26th, we were at 8.58% tax increase. And then following that, council asked us to go back and look at our ways that we could reduce it so that we had a combined budget of 5.0 increase. So we got down to 7.83% tax increase by, first of all, there was a reduction, a small one, to QEDC and some small changes to our payroll. And then finally, we used, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we used the contingency reserve to reduce the planning studies, the tax impact on those planning studies for 2019, which takes us down to 7.83%. If you turn to page four, the impact to the taxpayer, as requested by a couple of residents that we based it on an assessment of 300,000. I did it both ways, 300,000 and 250,000. You're welcome. You can see the percentages are the same, and you can see the impact to the taxpayers. And the blended increase right now is 4.87% in this draft budget. Then if we flip to page five, we have the service delivery enhancements listed on that page, and these are service delivery to our operating budget only, the increases. So council's already approved changes to the org chart, which meant that manager positions, a couple of them are now director positions. And we also had added two shared parks, public works operator positions, and a GIS tech. They're all in the budget. Also, our sidewalk maintenance and repairs budget is 100,000 this year. In 2018, I believe that was 80,000. And brushing and ditching has increased quite substantially, I believe, probably double. I didn't look at what that was. We're now partnering or have requested that that be put in the budget, so it's in here. Partnering with Bay of Quinney for our tourism, partnering with the Brighton-Crimi Chamber of Commerce for assistance with our Applefest Street Fair, partnering for physician recruitment with the Trent Memorial Hospital Foundation. At least, that's who the grant and aid requested come through, so I'm assuming that that's who we'll have our partnership agreement with. And also, medical oversight contract and training for our volunteer firefighters. So those are some of the service delivery improvements that are included in this budget. And following that, you have a summary of reserves, much the same as what you had before, your internal loan schedules. And your capital projects are all listed by department. And then finally, just a budget summary for your consideration. So I'll turn the floor back over to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Does council have any questions at this point about the report? Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. On page eight, the reserve funds, the first reserve fund is the gas tax, of which we show at the end of this year, we'll have 637-plus thousand dollars. That does not include the most recent announcement of an additional 300,000 dollars. Is that true?
That does not include that.
So at the end of 2019, we'll have almost a million dollars in that account?
Correct.
And is there a plan to use those funds for anything?
Well, gas tax has typically been used for our road projects, and we're going to be working on our long-term capital plan, and we're going to bring some suggestions forward to council on how we think that we could best utilize those funds, as well as the increase that we've received to OSIF, and as well as that new fund that was announced the week prior for 619,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Linda at this point from council? Councillor LeBlanc?
I just want to go back.
Use your microphone, please. It's not on.
Page five. I want to go back to page five, where you have on the bottom the service delivery enhancement, the 120,000 for brushing and ditching. When I was asking, I just wanted it for brushing, not for ditching. Ditching, if we wanted to do ditching, we should add more because we need that brushing. Done?
I will let Preston answer that.
I believe your request was for an additional 60,000 last meeting?
Yes.
We originally had 60,000 in for brushing and an additional 60,000 in for ditching, two separate accounts.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if this 120 is those two blended, so I don't know.
Well, if they're blended, we didn't get the extra 60 for brushing.
That's my assumption.
That number should read 180, then.
I believe this is additional funds, but Linda, are you able to comment on that?
Yes. This, last year, I think they had 10,000 in for brushing only and no money for ditching. So the enhancement is 120 that we're focusing on those two groups this year together.
I'll look for it if you want to move on.
I think in general, if I remember from previous years, when it comes to brushing and ditching, staff are going to evaluate the need to get it done, whether it needs to be more brushing, more ditching. I mean, is that something we're comfortable with? That's usually my understanding, that's usually a category of brushing and ditching. Councillor Tadman?
Just to further on that, they almost go hand in hand anyways. So you basically should be doing both.
Yeah. So the CEO just showed me there is an additional 60,000 in the contingency for brushing. He just showed it to me. So it is there. So this 120 is for ditching and brushing, and there's an additional 60,000 coming into contingency for brushing, because that's what I was.
So you're satisfied with the answer you received? Yes?
Yes. Still not finished yet.
Okay. Go ahead.
For Miller, I can't find, didn't find your budget. I had it on my tablet, so I didn't want to use my tablet. But you've asked for 50,000 for paving at the Ontario Street Boat Launch, and I went there, it's already tarred. It looks pretty good, but I would like to use, I don't know where council's, can that be used for the docks? Because the docks, if you wanted, the one in Harbor Street, you look at the one in Ontario Street, and you also look at the one in Gospor, where they use it for all the fishing derby. They're all broken apart into pieces, and they need to be welded, and the boards are missing on a lot of them. Could that 50,000 be used for the docks instead of the paving for this year?
Well, we've put 25,000 in last year's budget, so we've added 25,000 this year to pave that section. It was done years ago. They used the recycled asphalt, tarred it, and then rolled it, and it's starting to deteriorate. So that's the rationale for putting that into the budget, to get it looking good for the amount of use that it has down there. We do have money in this budget to replace the one dock that's down at Ontario Street Boat Launch, as well as to fix up the dock down at Bay Street, the crib dock. We have, we are replacing the middle dock this year. It's built, it's ready to go in as soon as the ice goes out. And, pardon? It is, okay. And yeah, we will be doing repairs to all the other docks. It's just usual maintenance and repairs this time of year.
The one in Gospor is really, if you look at the wheels, the metal is broken in half. The boards are missing.
Right.
So if we're going to talk about health and safety, which I don't like to use, but I think we should just go with repairs of the dock?
Oh, yeah. That's what I'm saying.
Because that one probably doesn't need to be repaired, needs to be replaced, because of where it is, because you can only get one boat in at a time. So it'd be better if they had a nail so it could bring the boat, so another one can just get out of the way and keep on going, otherwise it stops traffic, especially when we get a lot of our stuff that goes on in May, that's going to happen with the Walleye Tournament. I'd like to see the docks repaired, more than having that 50,000 dollars paved.
What Jim is saying is there is money in the budget for repairs to the docks already? Correct?
Yes.
So that is part of the budget already?
Okay.
That's what he's saying?
How much money is in there? 5,000?
No. There's 12,500 for the Ontario Street, and there's 40,000 in for the Gospor dock.
Okay. I missed that one.
Satisfied your question?
Satisfied my question.
Okay. Anyone else have a question for staff at this point? Councillor Rowley?
Thank you again. If I could just get an explanation on, this is on page seven, the reserves, the streetlight reserve, are we, do we not have a, like a 10-year freebie fixing the streetlights that we have? Is this just, or do we get, does money go in here, savings from hydro or something? Is that what that is?
Go ahead, Linda.
So we do have a 10-year warranty for parts and labor, but the company that we had hired is no longer in business, and so we didn't pay the 10% holdback, we reserved it instead.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions over here at all?
Yes. May I just ask about the Chamber of Commerce on page 17? We have 10,000 for the Applefest in there, I presume, and the other 7,000 is for, I'm trying to remember, please.
No, actually, that is the Bay of Quinty Tourism, not the Chamber of Commerce. It just fed into the wrong line on this summary, so that was a good question, but that actually is Bay of Quinty Tourism. Remember, we discussed that at 17.
So is it in the right place?
It's fine here, it's just the wrong words, so I'll correct that.
And the Applefest, or the 10,000 for the chambers in Applefest, is that correct?
And that is correct.
Okay.
And we also have an update on the question that was asked from Councillor LeBlanc about the brushing and the ditching. Last year, 2018 budget, there was 10,000 in for ditching. This year, we have 60,000, and we had zero for brushing, and this year, we have 120, now that we've increased it by the 60.
Great. Good. Okay.
While I have the floor, then, maybe ask a couple more questions?
Sure.
King Edward Park revenues for arena and, I guess, the rec hall, they seem to be lower than last year's. Is there a reason for that in revenues?
There's a couple of less hours of rental, which translates to less revenue coming in.
No, I'm talking about in the budget for, we're projecting less revenues and less, less.
Yes, so we have fewer rentals, so Jim budgeted for less.
So you know already?
Yes.
Pretty much, and I tend to budget that way, because I'd rather err on the side of caution than budget too high and then really miss it.
Fair enough. I just, in light of, we're looking at expenses, but I think we have to look at every opportunity we have to generate revenue against those expenses, and is it something that maybe needs to be promoted more? Is there empty, is the hall empty? What percent occupancy is it running? Is it full?
It's pretty high, the hall. The ice, I would say, is about 90%, 95% rented in the evenings. The only ice time that's available past 3 o'clock is 10 o'clock at night.
So there's not much wiggle room, as they say?
Not really. It's the type of thing where, you know, if you get a phone call and you get some bookings for something, it's a blessing, same as the community center, if somebody wants to book something for the weekend, you know, that hasn't been booked already, of course, it's a good thing. Yeah, there's a lot.
I also saw, I just got to mention this, where another community is marketing their council chambers for weddings. If you want to do that.
I don't think so.
Maybe the mayor wants to get them married. Another question, since I have the floor?
The mayor has no interest in getting married again.
No. Cheers. Okay, toast. Touch on the parking lot. Can we discuss our beliefs of what we like and don't like at this time, or do you want to save that down the road?
That would be for deliberations.
Okay. One more question?
Perhaps you can share the meeting. That would be great. Thank you. At this point, if we can just ask questions, and then we'll deliberate later.
I just like it when I have the floor.
I know.
Okay. I think we're doing well.
Oh, good.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Bateman now.
Thank you. Go ahead.
This question is more for educational purposes, for me and anybody else that doesn't know, I guess. Under the dock repairs, for the west Lower Dock on Ontario Street, it's 12,000. Repairs for crib dock, and again, I don't have a boat, so I don't know the difference between a crib dock and a dock, so I don't know if everybody else does. I'd like to be able to answer it. Because one's a repair, and it's more than replacing, so.
Yeah, the one, I heard on the 140, it should be 20,000, sorry, 12,000. The replacement for the Ontario Street dock is not as large, there's not as much wood, metal involved than the crib dock, so that's why it's less. We'll be building that in-house by our staff, so that's another reason why it's a little less. The crib dock, when the ice gets, goes out, which I hear it's out now, we will be assessing it and deciding at that time, we know it does need repairs, how bad it is. I think the idea is to repair it this year, get going with it, and then if it's deemed to be really on its last legs, put in some money next year to replace it. But we will get through this year with it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions at this point? Councillor Rowley?
Thank you. I'm looking at the Monk-Napier-Russell Street reconstruction.
What page?
This year. Were those?
What page are you on, just a week?
I'm on page 11. That's kind of the beginning. That's the capital item, and then I think water and wastewater is on a different page. But it's the project. I understood that that was last year's project. Were those dollars not budgeted for last year? So the reason that they're in there now?
We have to budget all of our expenditures. The list of capital items are just the expenditure portion. It doesn't show the revenue side in this particular document, and the revenue side would show transfers from reserves and transfers from grants like OSIF and the gas tax that were already allocated to those jobs last year. So we did transfer at the end of the year somewhere around 500,000 to reserves, and we're pulling them out again in 2019 for the tax support portion of those roads.
Yes.
So they end up being zero, zero tax.
So if we budget in one year and we don't use it, it gets transferred to reserves so we can use it the next year? Right? Makes sense? I have a question, actually. On the last page, we have tax increase of 7.83 and budget increase of 10.6. I know you've explained this to us before, but maybe you can just kind of explain how that works and why it is that there's a difference there?
Absolutely. So your budget increase is essentially your levy increase in 2019 compared to your levy, the levy that was set in 2018. That's a 10.6% increase in our municipal budget. To get to the tax increase, we look at the assessments that we had at the beginning of 2018, January 1, which we used to set last year's budget, and then we look at the assessments that we had at the end of 2018, and then we calculated growth figure from that. And in 2018, our growth was equivalent to 204,723 in tax revenue. So in order to compare apples to apples and get your actual tax increase, we add that growth to last year's levy to get a comparator levy, so that we can, we can figure out what the actual tax increase is for all the current taxpayers.
So basically, as house values go up, and we, when we have more people, more homes, more people, that is more income, of course, right? So you're offsetting that.
So the assessments will increase year over year on every home.
Yes.
And that's not growth. That's your assessment change.
Yes. Okay.
And then the new homes that were added on to our assessment base last year, that's our growth.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Any other questions at this point? Mayor?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I see, I'm on page three, and I see the additional brushing we put in was offset with a contingency reserve for brushing for 60,000, but the initial 60,000 that was in the budget, is that tax funded?
It's partially tax funded. We did use a little bit of contingency in the first place to offset some of the increase that we were having for brushing. I can tell you, I think, what that was, because we are using 215,000, I believe, out of that reserve this year, to get there. 215,000 out of the contingency reserve. We know 60,000 of that is for the planning studies, and we also used it for the sidewalks and for the brushing, just to increase those budgets in the first place. And then when we added another 60, we took that whole 60 from the contingency reserve.
So how much of the initial 60,000 is taxpayer-supported?
So originally, we used 55,000 from that, and then we're also using the contingents, no, 115,000, that's 55,000 plus the 60, for the brushing. I just want to check though the sidewalks, to see if there's more there. And another 40 for the sidewalks. So 155,000 then for brushing and for sidewalks.
So of the 100,000 we're putting into sidewalks, 60,000 is taxpayer, tax-supported, and 5,000 of brushing and ditching is tax-supported. Is that what I heard?
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions at this point? Councillor LeBlanc? Your microphone.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. The HVAC system for North Garage, is that the garage on this side of the railroad track?
No, that's the garage in Hillier on Chatten Road, sorry, Hilton. And it's not just, the description isn't accurate. It's not just the HVAC system, it's doors, the large garage doors, and some concrete work inside for the drain system. So it's a collective project.
The other question I have for you is on page 11. If Monk, Napier, and Russell were from projects from last year, and I see directly below it, engineering and design, 320,000, were they already designed, or is it for new designs? Is it for designs in the future?
I believe the 328 is for design in the future, is it not?
So Preston had added 200,000 for engineering for next year's projects. Council added another 100,000 in our very first meeting for more engineering, and in my review at year-end, I found 28,000 that we had transferred to reserves to be used in 2019. So that's where we get 328,000, and it's all for future projects.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Councillor Rowley?
Yes, thank you. Just one more question. I'm just, maybe Linda can just re-clarify exactly where the, because I didn't see it in words anywhere, where the decrease came from exactly. I think you explained that at the beginning, but I just didn't get it all. Thanks. Where the decreases were made in order to?
It's on page three.
Yeah.
It does show some of the ins and outs.
Right.
If Linda could explain?
Yeah, just exactly where we saved that half a percent or approximate half percent.
Okay. So council made all of the changes in the first table, and that's where we were, 8.58% at the end of the meeting on the 26th of March. And then the next little, small table, it was really essentially, we just took 60,000 from the contingency reserve to fund our planning studies. Official plan, zoning bylaw, and the mature neighborhood study. So we've reduced the impact to the taxpayer for almost those entire studies. There's very few dollars left. That's tax support.
Right. Okay. So that's, those three numbers are, is the total of how we decreased from 5.22 to 4.87?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm just going to go over here. Councillor Bateman?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just want to thank Jim for his explanation, because Councillor Anderson asked about the fluctuating and the differences, and I could probably explain that as well. At the start of hockey season, or any, whether it's figure skating and stuff, at the start of the year, we have a lack of ice time. Your prime time is, Jim would attest, is anywhere from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. After that, minor sports can't use it before, can't use it after, and at the start of the season, we actually send multiple teams outside our borders and spend quite a bit of money there. And then when you get later in the season, where the fluctuation would come in, that Mr. Miller's talking about, is your success or lack thereof, after January 5th or 6th, teams are in and out, so then they don't have as much ice time because of the nonprofit, they start to scale back if teams are eliminated, so we have to cancel ice. And when they're successful, they take a deep run in, and then that's when you'll see your revenue go up. So when you see it go up, then that means somebody's done well. But I'm not done. If I could, just so I can wrap my head around, under the page 16 of the canteen revenue and expenditures, are we talking the outdoor, the indoor canteen at King Edward Park?
What page are you on?
Page 16.
Thank you.
It would be the outdoor revenues, the canteen expenditures would be the hydro to run the washrooms and stock it for the summer, you know, because they're open from 8:00 to 8:00 every day for the splash pad and whatnot.
Any other questions? Councillor Bateman?
No, that's good. Thank you.
Councillor Anderson, I thought I saw your hand up earlier. Do you have a question or no? Do you have a question or no? Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I am on, or I was a second ago, sorry. Page 11. Page 11, the capital items. On the road construction projects, engineering and design, $328,000. Mrs. Whitfield, you mentioned that 28 of that is coming from a reserve from contingency that came out of last year. Does that mean the $300,000 is tax-supported?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions at this time for staff? Go ahead, Counselor Tadman, and then Counselor LeBlanc after.
I think it was the last, through you Deputy Mayor, the last time we were doing this budget, there was a request for a foreman for Public Works. And hopefully, I heard incorrectly, but it would be $80,000 for eight months.
Yes, that would include the payroll taxes, the benefits, everything.
So, that would be over $100,000 per year after this year. And so, that affects the pay grid for everybody else, doesn't it? If you're going to pay that kind of money to a foreman, then I can't imagine people that have higher titles, maybe it's not the best way to say it, but take, for instance, our clerk, I know she doesn't make anywhere near that money. And how fair is that, that a foreman is going to make that kind of money if the clerk, who would be second in position, I would think, to the CIO? So, I don't know what we do about that and I'm sure...
Counselor Tadman, we're not supposed to have that kind of discussion at this point because we're talking about certain staff members. If you have questions about the amounts and that sort of thing, I think Linda had mentioned that includes payroll taxes and all, that's not...
I understand all of that, Deputy Mayor, but I'm trying to make a point that somewhere we got to cut this because there's no way that I will support that kind of a tax increase when people are struggling. We've got three clothing depots in Brighton and a food bank, and the kids are going to school hungry. And now, they're going to be hit with the carbon tax. People just can't, some people just can't afford that kind of thing. And someplace in here, we got to start cutting.
Okay, thank you. Did you want Linda to explain a little bit more about that increase or that budget item? Or is it, did you have questions, I guess, for her at this point that you didn't get answered?
I can understand that it could be justified that we need that person, but I don't know how we can sustain the kind of wages that we're going to have to face because we're moving the grade up so much that I don't know how we're going to keep all the staff on.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff at this point? Counselor LeBlanc?
Through you Deputy Mayor. Turn it off, I'm sorry. I apologize.
No, I think it's your, microphone keeps turning off on you.
Through you, Mayor. You said that for the docks at Gosport was 10, but it was originally, you said it was 20?
At Gosport? It is 20 for the crib dock. Yeah, it's $12,000 for the Antero Street.
Okay, 20. And with that, we still have the $50,000 to pave the parking lot?
Yes, that's what was estimated last year when Lucas Kelly and myself looked at it.
Okay. I just want to confirm before we go into debates. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions at this point for staff? Mayor?
Just to clarify, where's the revenue source for the paving?
Half of it would be reserves because we put that much in last year because I had it in last year. And the other 25 would be tax.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, I just want to make sure as well before we go in, on Counselor Tadman's comment about another position. We had some wish lists and some desire for some positions that we did not add, and we had some that we did add. Can you clarify what we are adding and what we are not adding so we all know before we move forward?
So, the changing the manager's positions to director positions was added. A GIS position was added. And two seasonal positions became two full-time positions shared with Parks and Public Works, that was added. The foreman position was not added. And the position for records management was not added.
Counselor Anderson?
Were we going to get a response back tonight about the foreman and the records person from the CIO or is it too soon?
Certainly, too soon for me.
Okay.
Anyone else? Counselor Rowley?
Thank you. Just regarding positions again, was there a position added for the Finance Department as well?
No, there was not. We have a position on the York Chart that's been filled in a part-time capacity in the interim. It's been vacant since March when our financial analyst went on leave. But, that position we're going to recruit for starting this week. So, it's going to be filled. It's part of the York Chart, so it's no effect to the budget.
So, it's not a new position?
Okay, it's not, okay, thank you.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Through you Deputy Mayor, to Preston, the Director of Roads and Grounds. We are taking on a large agenda and a lot of work this year, tons of it. How successful can you be without this extra supervisor, foreman?
To be honest, it's a difficult question to answer. I built the plan to do all the road construction in-house with the previous CIO blessing the foreman position. But, it's been pulled out and then, our new CIO, Mr. Kalsman, wants to evaluate things. We're going to do the best we can, but that's all I can really say at this point.
Through you Deputy Mayor.
Go ahead.
With this being my, not quite my first year on council, I don't want to get tasked to anybody, and you're no here to fail. I want everybody to succeed. And you've taken on, there's a lot here that's needed to be done and that is going to be, hopefully, is going to be done. So, I look at if you don't have the personnel, how do we work around this?
All I can say is I'm going to utilize all the resources that I have to get as much done as we possibly can.
I have one question. So, the, what was the cost, just to remind us, what was the cost of the foreman for this year's budget or the records management person? I just was wondering if you have those, just so we know, if we have a discussion later, we know what amounts we're talking about.
For the foreman position for eight months, it was $80,000. I looked that up at the last meeting. The records management position, there was a paper in our first draft budget, New Initiatives for General Government, on page 24. The position for 2019 for eight months is $39,000, including payroll taxes. That's a non-benefit position.
Okay.
And then, if the position were to become permanent, the cost of benefits would increase the annual cost by about $13,600.
Would that happen in the first year or that would be going forward?
No, it would probably, so, the annualized cost for the position, including payroll taxes, is about $58,000. And that's where the number difference came up. But, that would totally be council's discretion if we're going to have that position, temporary position become full-time.
So, we're basically looking at 39 and 80. If we're to discuss it, those are the numbers. Okay. Any other questions? Counselor LeBlanc?
Through you Deputy Mayor. I'm just trying to educate myself. This is for the Linda, the accountant. I don't know how to answer this, but are we allowed to use reserves to hire staff?
You don't have any reserves set aside for operating budgets like hiring staff. What you're actually asking me is can we use reserves for tax rate stabilization in order to provide our service enhancements? And that is council's prerogative. However, if you do that this year, you're going to be funding the position as an increase, a complete increase next year. So, you're only delaying the pain. Do you understand what I'm saying? So, if you have an expenditure of $80,000 and you use $80,000 in reserves this year, next year, when that position is $100,000 for the full year and you don't have any reserves left, you're going to feel the impact of that $100,000 next year.
Yeah, but what I'm looking at is I'm not going to be buying a greater for $400,000 next year. Hopefully, that's going to be lasting us for 20, 25 years.
But, we're borrowing internally to buy that greater. Yeah.
Any other questions at this point? Okay, thank you, Linda. We're ready to move on.
Deputy Mayor, if I may?
Yes, absolutely.
I think I printed large capital budgets sheets just now. I'm going to go check and see if they're there for everybody. It'll show how they're being funded. I think that'll help you with your deliberations while you do public comment.
Great, thank you. So, next is public comments. And I'm just wondering if there's anyone here that has any comments, if you want to come forward to the microphone? We have a quiet bunch tonight. Okay, next, we'll move into the budget deliberations. I don't need to pass this because it won't tell you. Okay, so, I'm going to leave that to you.
Deputy Mayor, may I suggest a small break while the Director of Finance brings those sheets down to us?
Sure.
Thanks.
Not that long. Seven minutes. Can you do it in seven minutes? Will you be in a better mood when you come back? No, go ahead. Okay, we're all back. We can continue on, resume our meeting. We're going to start with our budget deliberations. We've been presented with the changes that we've asked for. We're at a blended rate of 4.87 at this point. And I'm just going to open the floor to anyone who would like to start with their comments. Counselor Tadman?
Excuse me for eating while I talk, but we put nothing in the budget for finishing up this building, and it's a mess. And I've been screaming since 2003, I think we need to at least do something about the... That's got nothing to do with what I've been screaming about.
So, you're concerned about some of the areas of the building that are not being touched, correct?
Right.
On the outside?
Outside and inside. The basement could be utilized if we stop the leakage.
Okay.
One thing, and the bricks are, the facing on the bricks are falling off. The backs, the doors coming in everywhere, except now, the front, I noticed one of them's painted. Never been painted. The railings are, they're getting to the point that it's a safety issue.
So, can, I know we've kind of done the portion where we asked staff, but they're still here, of course. Can we ask staff if any of those things are included? And have you ever gotten a ballpark on how much it would cost to fix some of those things?
I've never been able to get that far. Because nobody else seems to agree that we need to do that. And there's lots of things that need to be done, and I think we need to put some money in each year, but definitely, there's some things that need to be done.
Sure. CIO would like to comment.
So, I'll just jump in here for a moment, only because I've been working on the strat plan. As you know, we got together last week and you asked me to make some changes. And what I did notice as of today was that part of the strat plan is to do a facility review or audit. And we'll be doing just that to identify accessibility issues, ingress egress issues, and energy efficiency issues. So, with each and every building, we'll have an assessment of what needs to get done and we'll prioritize that and bring it forward accordingly. So, obviously, this will be one of the buildings.
Go ahead.
That's great, and I'm glad that we're going to do that, but I still think we need to get started this year and put some money in.
Okay. Counselor LeBlanc?
I've listened to, through you Deputy Mayor, I've listened to my fellow counselor for four months on this building and pointing at the bricks. I've also talked to some of the staff and they found the bricks, the pieces of the bricks into the flower gardens, they're there. And one thing for this building, because it's our main building, it's going to be our main focus, beautiful entrance, I think we should take money out of reserve for this year while the study's going on. Once we know what cost, we will put an upset amount of 100 or 150 or 200,000 to do the outside facing, to do those rails and the safety issues to be there, not to exceed that for this year and take it out of reserves.
So, you're looking for 100, 150,000 to be taken out of reserve to take care of some of the issues around the building? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, and inside, also the washrooms.
Okay. Linda, did you want to comment on that?
We do have a bit of money in the budget to finish the two washrooms here on this floor and finish the lunchroom. Not a lot of money. I think there's 15,000 that we're going to use to finish that. The municipality's been putting money, $20,000 in reserves for a few years for this building, and that reserve balance right now is 87,000. So, the 20,000 has been going in for a few years. And obviously, we pulled it out for furnishings in 2018 and the 15,000 that we have in the budget to finish the bathrooms and the kitchen.
So, after the 15, how much is left?
87,194.
Okay.
And so, we have been doing that for a number of years. I just wanted to make sure council was aware.
Thank you. I'd be interested in having a smaller amount possibly come out of reserve to take care of a few other things this year, and then, next year, we can look at a few more things. Any other comments about that, maybe while we're on the same subject? Go ahead, Mayor, and then...
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. One would assume that if that was shown as a, that this building was shown as a priority through the audit process, we would pull those monies out of reserve regardless of whether we budget for them or not. So, we know there's $87,000 in reserve to help with the repair and maintenance of this building. I would look forward to staff's report with regard to what we need to do and what those priorities are before we start just sort of willy-nilly allocating monies into a budget.
Will that report be coming out this year, six months? Just out of curiosity?
Yeah, our best guess would be we try and get it done by the end of the year.
End of the year, okay. Preston, I saw your hand.
Just for information, I've been trying to get an estimate from a couple of brick layers to redo the back of the building. I want to change the material so we don't have to worry about the clay brick flaking off in the future. So, I haven't been able to get a number for that yet. So, I didn't want to go, as the mayor said, willy-nilly at it and try to throw numbers at it, something I can't even guess at. The other, we're getting a price on some railing already to replace them, and it's just part of our normal maintenance and care. It's not a capital project by any stretch or anything, but it'll take time, but we will get it cleaned up and we'll get it looking better.
Okay, thank you. I think you actually have been heard, Mary. And I think that we can start doing some of these things like they're talking about. So, at this point, do you still want to put, are you still proposing to put something in the budget for this year, just so that I can get a majority of council or at least a feeling from rest of council?
Getting some promises is more than I've had for the last 16 years. So, I look forward to seeing some things done.
Okay.
Because I think we need to have a pride in our place, and I'm not proud of this place.
Okay. Okay, any other comments at this time? Go ahead, Counselor Anderson?
I'm fairly happy with the budget the way you have it, except there are a few things that we could pull back on. The parking lot down there, the $50,000 parking lot, I don't think we need that right now. I think that money could be better used somewhere else either for some improvements or beautifications of the Gosport. or beautifications of the Gosport area. You're talking about the docks down there. You're talking about perhaps there's other things we could do with it, but I don't think 50,000 for a parking lot is important this year. I don't think the, if I can just touch my three things and then I'll leave it there, is that okay?
Sure. At one point, are you, you have to let us know whether you...
I don't agree with the 50,000 parking lot.
Okay. Let's deal with that then. Let's hear from the rest of council on that and see whether we have a majority that would like to take it out, because that's what's being proposed. Go ahead, Councilor Tadman.
As most people here know, I do live at Gosport and I understand what Jim's doing and I think that'll suffice for this year. And I have been over lots of times at the Ontario Street one and it's disgusting there. It needs paving. People are getting stuck trying to get their boats in and out of the water. And there's big rats at times and Jim can tell you about all the problems that are over there. So I think it's a good investment.
And I think also if we're making this effort to promote Brighton, that is a tourism attraction as well, having a boat launch. So I can see where the dollars, I mean 50,000 to pave sounds like a lot, but that's the price, of course. So I can see where it would actually benefit. We will have to keep these things up as well. Go ahead Mayor.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. And let's also keep in mind that we saved $25,000 for this project out of last year's budget. So if we were to cut this, we'd only be saving $25,000 out of this year's budget, but I think the time has come to repave that particular parking lot.
Okay, any other comments from council? Anyone else want to comment on that? Go ahead, Councilor LeBlanc.
While we were in recess, Mr. Miller came and told me that parking lot is part of a huge master plan, which I wasn't made aware of, of a waterfront master plan and for trails and from going through it. So I wasn't aware of that. He also made me aware that the Gosport dock, the one that I saw that's broken apart and everything, has been sold and there's a new one waiting to be put in its place, which I wasn't aware of either. So, okay, so I'm happy with what's going on. He informed me of what I didn't know.
Thank you. So anything more on the parking lot at this point?
Obviously...
You're on.
Excuse me, can I, obviously it doesn't sound like you're in favor of holding back on that. I just think our roads and our other services need more attention. I think our budget is, our Councilor Tadman also suggested our budget's getting rather high. I'm looking at ways of shaving it. If we can hold off a year on a parking lot, I think we have a lot of other issues. You know, I'm just looking, there's 50,000 and I'll talk about some more when we get to the next points.
Sure. Well, we're just kind of going around the table. I mean, we can go line by line if we want to, but there's a lot in the budget.
I just had three items that I wanted to...
Sure, why don't you throw out your three items and we can discuss them and we'll move on.
We are going to, we're talking about presenting $20,000 to the Legion for their roof. I think they're doing very well with their fundraising. I would never hold back for them from getting to reach their goal of getting that roof on there. However, again, $20,000 to our taxpayers this year is another area that we might be able to, maybe 10,000 would suffice for now, for now. And perhaps should they have difficulties getting that final 10,000, we could come to their support later in another way. But I believe there's another 10,000. And another 5,000, I believe the lighthouse contribution could be rolled back from 10,000 to 5,000, having looked at what the community's already provided for that. And I'm a strong supporter of that lighthouse and they've done an excellent job. And I was really worried we were going to lose it, but I think, again, that's something that we can address down the road if the lighthouse committee has difficulties again. But this year I think their sights are on doing some improvements down there, but not the extensive work that they were doing. So I think 5,000 would be ample. So that would leave 65,000 if, and maybe only 25, like the mayor was saying, 25 over the parking lot, but money is money. I don't care if it's from last year or this year.
Budgeting wise, it's only 25.
Okay.
It's in reserves.
So if you wanted to leave the budget the way it is, there's 65,000 that could go to the mayor's reserve, 1% reserve fund.
Okay, so as far as the parking lot, the general consensus was to leave it? Is that correct? I just need to get a consensus from council on that parking lot. We're going to leave the 50 or the 25 that's budgeted? Okay, so I'm getting a general consensus on this. 20,000 to the Legion. Is there anyone, anyone else on council that'd like to change that? Go ahead, Councilor Tadman.
No, I think I fully support it and we've been told that it's going to be used as an emergency center and it's used for a lot of different things. And a lot of what the Legion does is free service for the community. And I was there a couple of weeks ago and when it was raining and they had buckets, so you know, it's time to get it fixed and I think we need to help them do that.
Okay, anyone else from council want to comment on that? Councilor Rowley?
I would agree with my neighbor here, Councilor Tadman. We could give them 10,000, but if they need the other 10,000, they're going to come back for it anyway before the end of the year and we're still going to have to find a place. We're still going to have to find it.
Okay. Go ahead, Isabel.
And if they raise more than they need, I'm sure that they won't be taking the full 20.
Okay. Any other comments on the 20,000 Legion? We have three saying leave it. Councilor Bateman?
I'm 100% in favor of leaving it there. We already pledged our support.
Okay.
We know it's a valuable part of the community. My biggest concern is, if I could just say a statement, I know that we all went back and forth. 5% seems like a lot and it is a lot for some people and it's not a lot for other people. But we do have to catch up on a lot of stuff and I'm not a person that likes to look backward. I like to remember where we've come from so you don't recreate mistakes of the past, but we can't dwell on the past. We have to move forward. And to me, the biggest part, if we go with a 5% and everything we have in here and Mr. Parkinson touched on it, he's going to do the best he can. Where we'll be held accountable is not how much we spend, how much we get done. If we do 5% worth of stuff, the community as a whole will be happy. I've been in that place where you don't have a lot of money and I'm not that far removed from it, nobody is. But if we can accomplish what we say we're going to do, that's the big measuring stick. So we can sit here and go back and forth, take pennies out, but that's not what's going to define us.
Okay, thank you. Right now I want to get a consensus or an idea of where council wants to go on these suggestions that we can decide what we're doing then we'll move on. So on the Legion, I think I have consensus that would like to leave it the same. I heard from at least four councillors. The lighthouse, any change that we want to make to the lighthouse? We're at 10, is it 10 even, 10 right now? And there was suggestion to move it down to 5. Any other comments from council on that? I'd actually be okay to moving it down to 5. They have been very successful. The lighthouse has been repaired. It's not like they have a leaky roof still, you know what I mean? Like there is a difference. So at this point, I'd be okay with that. Any other comments from council on that? I just want to hear from the other councillors for a second to see if anyone else is... Mayor?
If it's council's wish to take it down to 5, then I guess that would be fine. You know, it's $5,000 at the end of the day. Yes, it's a lot of money to a lot of people, but on our budget, it's a real drop in the bucket.
I understand that, yes. Any other comments from council? Are we wanting to leave it the same or? I'm just not getting a consensus.
And again, I think with the lighthouse, my understanding with the lighthouse is if they raise enough money to cover the cost of their, whatever it is they want to do this year, they won't keep our $10,000. So they would be returning that taxpayer money.
Councilor Tadman?
Thank you for that Mayor. That's exactly what I was going to bring forward. So I would say leave it at 10 and hopefully they'll raise 10 and they'll give it all back to us.
Okay, I'm not getting any other comments at this point. Councilor Bateman?
I'm good with leaving it for 10 now, as long as they, like the mayor said, they hit their benchmark. Every group should do that when they hit their benchmark, if I was saying.
And then Councilor Anderson, you had another comment on that?
I just find that, you know, we give money to other groups that are a long time, have been with the community for a long time, like for Soho or Heritage, we give only 10,000. We don't give anything to the Chamber of Commerce. We don't give, we seem to, are we looking for things that are, like a parking lot, $50,000? I just, in this, at this time, if we add another 1% for a reserve, we're going to be, at what percent then are we going to be at? 6%, right? And you've added more for, and that's something that I agree with is the councillor across the way wanted to add more money for brushing and that. We added how much tonight for that?
It was the last meeting and it was an extra 60.
Oh, so we just had to identify it, that's all. And anyhow, I just, I think we're, we've sort of creeping over above where I feel comfortable, where the community can handle this. And I think we have a lot of things, good things being done. I think the key things that are being done are roads and sidewalks and infrastructures, items that people really want and some real nice things in recreation and the community that way. But we don't, we don't seem to be giving a fair spread across the community and the groups that we're giving.
So just to be clear, the lighthouse?
And we're expecting money to come back, which, and I'm sure they will, they're all good people, but we're budgeting based on expectations and I don't know if that's the way to go when we're at such a high budget.
So just to be clear, items like the Legion, the lighthouse, Soho, they put an application in and we either approve or don't approve. Other organizations don't necessarily. So that's how that works. So we can say that we're not giving other places.
And one more point then. Did I just say one more point? There's only 5,000, 6,000 left if anybody else has a need or a wish on that budget.
Yes.
And this is where I was hoping if we could roll that back, that this would allow us to have 20,000 going into the remainder of this budget term, that we can, we have some flexibility down the road. But there will be no flexibility now.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Tadman and then Mayor.
Thank you. You probably won't appreciate me saying it, but I'm going to anyways because I always do. But there was three of us sat in the previous council and it sounds like all of a sudden this council's doing wonderful and mighty things and they are, but we did a lot the other years and we were able to hold the taxes down. I think there's other ways of cutting in this budget without nickel and diming at this point.
Do you have suggestions?
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
As always.
Did you?
I would like to, first of all, have justification why we need so many new vehicles. I'm driving a 206 and I add extra oil because it likes more.
What vehicle, like what?
I'd like to go over all of them and see if they're that necessary this year. Because I understood from our clerk that we definitely, under mandate from the province, need to have this person to do the, I'll let Candice speak to that, that we need to have this person to do the actual, what do we call you? That person, I forget, records keeping?
Records management?
Yeah. Is that not mandated by the province?
Having a person isn't mandated, but having the records done is mandated.
Yeah, the records, yeah. So we got, what was it, 38,000 or something position that we were just not even looking at? And yet we're buying a bunch of new trucks that I haven't been convinced that we need them all at once.
Okay. Just going to let Linda comment on that for a second?
I just wanted to remind council that you already gave preapproval for those, so you can, you won't want to discuss them again because that's already, they've already let the tenders out for them.
Okay. Mayor?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. And just to remind council that all of the vehicles that we have let tenders on will be financed through internal borrowing. So if we were to remove them from the budget, it really would have no effect on the, or limited effect on the tax support. But maybe you could let us know what the effect is of borrowing for those vehicles this year.
So generally, we, when we add a vehicle to our internal borrowing, we add 10% per year for repayment so that in the 10-year life cycle of that large truck or piece of equipment, it's paid for.
Okay. Anyone else want to comment at this time? Suggestions? Go ahead.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. So my suggestion is with regard to my comment on gas tax. We have increased our engineering fees by $100,000, fully tax-supported. And we know we have $300,000 of engineering for roads projects budgeted for tax support. We know we have $60,000 of sidewalk that's tax-supported and it's a small amount, $5,000 for brushing and ditching. But if we were to take $200,000, $220,000, somewhere around there, from the gas tax to pay for engineering and sidewalks, that would then allow us perhaps to put 80 or so thousand dollars in the budget for a staff position or staff positions that are unidentified at the moment, whether that be records management or a foreperson for public works or maybe part of both if that's what council agrees. And I still, of course, will pitch my 1% on the local levy for capital reserve, which would be another 80-ish thousand dollars.
Okay. So if, when we're done doing our deliberations, if we can discuss the 1% and make a decision on that, is that okay?
Yep, so I'll just back up and say what I would like us to do is take about $220,000 of gas tax money to fund, we can just say to fund the engineering of the roads projects.
If we can get Linda to comment on that? Were we able to do that?
So gas tax has prescribed uses. I would think that we would be farther ahead and we can do this to apply them to some of our other road projects this year, rather than engineering. I know it's splitting hairs, but I just wanted to make sure that council's aware.
So we could take $220,000 from this additional gas tax that we're going to receive?
Yes.
And apply it to some of our roads projects to bring those down? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And what you're saying Mayor is that could open up so that we could have a discussion around some of the staffing? Is that your?
Well, let's deal with one item at a time. So I'm suggesting, well now I'm suggesting, thank you Mrs. Whittifield, that we apply $220,000 of gas tax to our roads projects that are currently tax-supported.
Our capital budget only increased by 116,000, 116,895. So we're actually looking at reducing our contribution toward our capital budget, tax support. I understand that your 1% is going to come back into play. Will that be, just for my interest, 1% of the capital budget, 1% of the entire budget, 1% of the levy? What's the?
My suggestion is 1% of the levy.
Okay. If we do that as a transfer to reserves, please be aware that that becomes an operating expense, not a capital expense. And I think that you'll still see that your capital looks like it's declining. I'm not sure of the optics on that. That's all I'm suggesting to you.
Okay, so we're going to, that's the 1%, though. Councilor Tadman, did you have a comment about some of these suggestions that have been made?
A question about the gas tax.
Absolutely.
We, at the end of the year, will have almost a million?
That's correct.
In reserve. And we don't want to go downhill with our capital. But we've got to find out a way to reduce the actual tax increase. And I like what you're saying Mayor. Is there any other way we can take money out of the gas tax, keep our capital at least where it is and use the money someplace else? Because I know about gas tax enough with Quinnia Access that you can't just use it for everything.
I was thinking that we were going to use that gas tax for more road projects, not reducing our current budget and our current capital budget. So I was thinking that that would be leverage for us to do a bigger project in the future. There is some room for still pulling out of contingency for your sidewalks. We were talking about a difference in your sidewalk budget. That's maintenance on sidewalks. That may be something that you want to consider. And I understand what you're saying about the, please be aware with that little spreadsheet that we have on page five. It shows the capital increases year over year over year and you can see that we've been increasing... and you can see that we've been increasing our capital spending by at least, on average, at least 1% a year. On top of that, we're also putting 130,000 into reserves for public works each year, but then we end up spending it on a road project, but we are doing that. We could increase that 130, but that's pretty close to your, a percentage anyway. But the capital budget itself has been increasing by about 1% a year. We don't want to see that decline. I don't think that that's a best practice. And we also don't want to see our reserve transfers decline, because we want to show that we're trying to plan for our future. We also want to make sure that we're using our reserves that we have in the best way possible. And like I said before, we haven't done our capital plan yet, so we don't know what we have coming down the pipe in the next five years. We have to see what the road needs study says and how, which roads are going to be coming up for reconstruction. We know we're going to have some work to do on Prince Edward. We know we're going to have some work to do on Main. And so saving these federal gas tax monies for our long-term plan and, and building them in, I think is, is probably our best bet. But then, it's, at the end of the day, it's council's discretion. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. So Councillor Tadman and then Councillor Anderson to comment on that?
Usually our best place to borrow or remove money is the contingency fund. How much is in there now that we've, have you got the balance now?
Yeah, it's in here.
Even after you pull out $215,000, your contingency reserve's still over a million dollars.
Can you, sorry, can I ask one more? Can you repeat what you said about the sidewalk repairs? Could we take that at a contingency instead of gas tax?
Yes, that would be preferable because it's maintenance. The monies that we have in the budget for our sidewalks, not the new road construction because that's capital. The monies that we have are maintenance monies. So it's, it's all of those orange painted sidewalks that we'll get a contract, a contract out?
Yeah.
To have someone repair them. So right now Preston has 120,000 and last year we had 80,000. We're pulling 40 from reserves and that means that there's still 80 sitting there. That's a stable budget line.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So 80 to 80 is a stable budget line. But if you were looking at ways to reduce, you have left sidewalk work on the table before. So sidewalk work, money that we collected for sidewalk work has gone into your contingency reserve. When you think about that, bear in mind that next year we may have to do 80,000 again and you've reduced the budget by whatever you contribute from the contingency reserve this year.
Okay. I promise Councillor Anderson and then Mayor.
I just quickly, I agree. I think the reserve, the gas tax should be saved, reserved for that Main Street development that you talked about. I like to see, I'll just say, those lights at Ontario Street. And one thing that makes me bring that up, here we've got our new medical center area that's going to be busy. We've got the addition going on there. There's all kinds of activity at that intersection, more so than ever. And I think it's a priority in that area. So, so I think that study that you, you mentioned about Main Street before spending any more money on it, that's where a lot of it probably will end up going. And, and then with the further development down the west end of Main Street or out on number two, will all tie together. And so with that plan, we should hang on to that money and with the intention of maybe using it in the not-too-distant future, but probably wouldn't be this year, but. And I, and it's nice to see the summary of reserves hitting 11 million dollars on here. So I think you're doing what you know is right and what you feel good about. And what you, when you mentioned about the gas tax there, I think you hit a nerve with me. I think that's good planning and that's what we should do there.
Mayor?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Did we run a surplus or a deficit out of 2018?
The year-end isn't done. We're not running a deficit as far as I can see, but I don't know what that dollar's going to be yet.
No guess?
I wouldn't guess, not publicly.
Fair enough.
Councillor Tadman?
So back to our sidewalks, they definitely need to be done. I don't know what, whether council agrees with me or not, but I think it would be worthwhile to take that out of the contingency fund, at least part, to do the sidewalks.
Give us a mount so that I can get a consensus and what do you think?
What dollar do you like?
What dollar do I like?
Yeah.
What's, what's our total for the sidewalk repairs? It's only 60.
It's actually a net of 80 right now. It's 120 minus 40. I stood to be corrected in my draft.
Okay, so a net of 80, that's tax-supported at this point, so.
80.
So you're suggesting as we take the remaining 80 from contingency?
That cuts 1%.
It does. Can I get an idea from council as far as what they, on that, whether they're agreeable to it or not? I'm getting some nodding heads. I need to get an idea from council. Yes?
As long as there's no more cuts.
We're saving 1% by taking it out of contingency at this point. Councillor Rowley?
We're taking it out, we're taking it out of contingency. Next year if we have to do it, we've got to put another percent or so back in to cover the shortfall.
These are repairs, so hopefully we're not having to do the same amount of repairs next year, is that?
I'm sure there's going to be more repairs than just Main Street.
Forget we keep adding sidewalks.
Sorry, if I could just chime in, I could see it staying at 80,000 at least for the next four or five years to catch up on deficiencies, not only with trip hazards and, and tactical plates that need to be installed at intersections, but also sidewalk that's too narrow, or perhaps it's tilted too much, or it's too close to the edge of road on narrow streets, that sort of thing.
So we can take it out this year and we can double back up next year and add more percents?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
I say leave it in then.
I'm just going to let Linda, that usually helps in our conversation. Linda, go ahead.
I think I can help. So if we ended up funding 100% of our sidewalk maintenance this year through the contingency reserve, Preston's suggesting that next year we're going to add 80,000 in. That's an 80,000 increase, so perhaps next year we use 60. So we're adding 20. Use 60 of the contingency. The year after that, and I could do a schedule for you, the year after that, we use 40. And just slowly build it back up by 20,000 a year for three or four years, you're not taking a lot out of your contingency. And at the same time, you're going to build it back up without a one-year impact to the taxpayer. I could do a schedule for council if you're interested in something like that and then we can, you know, it'll help you this year at least.
Councillor Tadman?
Well, I was thinking that we're just going to have so much money to put back in there because all the different projects will run under and we'll have all kinds of money. So I, I still stick with 80,000 this year. And the surplus, there's got to be a surplus, we'll have extra money.
Any other comments on the sidewalk idea coming from contingency? Go ahead.
No, I didn't want that to network.
I do need, I do need, when, when a councillor brings up a suggestion, it's good to get a consensus, whether there's a majority of councillor in favor or not in order for us to make decisions.
I'm in favor of moving ahead with the sidewalks, for sure. And if that's the way to do it, I would support Mary on that.
Okay. I'm just going to, I want to get a.
However, I, I think we're just going to add another percent for reserve on top of all this. And so we're taking from one and giving to the other, but.
It's the way we play the game.
I'm, I'm, I like, I don't know if I'm here to play, I'm here to work. So I think we need to look at that.
Councillor Bateman, any comments, suggestions on the sidewalk?
I was just going to ask for clarification. You said some of the contingency money that's in there, was earmarked originally for sidewalks?
Mm-hmm, yes, that's correct.
But we're already using some of that, yes.
With the number of sidewalks that are in repair and we save our contingency for a rainy day, I would say it's already raining.
I don't think contingency are for a rainy day, they're for, they're plant, for future planning. We already are taking some from contingency for these sidewalks. We're talking about taking more, all of it.
I would agree to it.
Okay, so we have a majority on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Sidewalks? So that's saving us approximately a percent, just so we have an idea where we're at? 3.4.
4.41. And as you'll recall, I, I said 1% tax increase would be 0.45, so that, it went down about 0.45.
Okay, so currently we're at 4.41. Last week, I did have a majority of council that was going to be satisfied with a 5% increase. Are we okay with leaving things as they are? Do we need to have further discussion? Are we ready to accept this budget as it is, move on, and then discuss the 1% yet?
I want to throw out again the concept of earmarking 80,000 for a potential new hire.
Okay.
That way if we get the organizational review done through the CAO's office, we don't have to wait for a full budget year to come around if we choose to hire. Maybe council wants to wait a full budget year.
So you're suggesting 80,000 and we'll decide later on where, where that 80,000 goes for, because we have a few different positions? Comments from council on that? I want to hear whether we're in favor of that or not. We'll start over here. Councillor LeBlanc, you don't have a suggestion or a comment on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Start with the old lady.
About a minute ago, we were at 4.41.
She called herself, sorry.
What?
I just called you the old lady, they're all scoffing, but didn't you just call yourself that a little while ago? Yes, okay.
Yes, and because I'm an old lady, you should listen to me. Okay, 4.41 a minute ago, and then the mayor wants to add another 1%, that's 5.41, which is totally unacceptable as far as I'm concerned.
It's not a full percent difference.
Brings it right back to 4.
It brings it right back to the 4.87. Okay?
How can that be?
Because it's, um, it's, no, it's the blended rate.
She's right, because I'm, I'm adding 80,000 now for a potential staff person and we haven't even talked about my, my 1% reserve.
Okay.
Is it floor open?
80,000 will make a 1% tax increase on your municipal levy.
Yes, but the blended rate?
And 0.45% increase on your blended rate.
So on the blended rate, it's not quite the 1. So we're talking about the blended rate when we talk about the 5. So we'll bring it right back to the 4.87, correct? Okay.
And that's it?
Yes.
Not unless council agrees to what my concept that I threw out. I haven't heard anybody else but me say it's a good idea.
Excuse me.
You heard me say it wasn't. And then you, on top of that, you're suggesting another 1%.
So let's discuss the staffing, whether we're in favor or not.
Go ahead Mary.
Not, not to increase it to 4.87, no, we've got to find another way of doing it.
Councillor Rowley, comments, suggestions on this?
Yes. I need some more paper. The numbers are back and forth, they're crazy. Just need to scratch more numbers. So your 80,000 is for a staffing person, should that happen this year, and we, we think it probably will. Are you willing to trade off your 1% as we just took 1% out of contingency for sidewalks? And now you want to add 1% for more, for an infrastructure reserve is what I'm hearing, right? So you want, you're basically looking at 160,000, 80 for staff, 80 for at some point is what you're thinking.
Sure.
So we just took some to save some and now you want to add another percent for something that we're going to save for another year.
I, I see a roads budget of $2 million in this year's, in this year's budget. And I know that in this municipality, we should be spending $2.5 million on roads projects in order to keep up with our infrastructure deficit. So I know that if we were to increase our local tax levy by 6%, we'd have another $500,000 that we could spend on roads. Nothing else, just roads. And 6% gets us all the roads we want in the world. I, I know we can't get from 0 to 6% in one year, that would be unfair and unreasonable. I get that. So 1% this year gets us beginning down that road. That's just roads, ladies and gentlemen. I'm not talking about any other capital infrastructure that is degrading over time, which is all of our capital infrastructure that degrades over time. We'll have to wait for a report from senior staff to let us know what our true and real deficit is. But I know, just based on the papers that I've seen come across, the, the desks that have sat down variously over the course of the last 16 years, off and on, that we continue to get behind by give or take $500,000 every single year over the course of the last 16 years. Never mind what happened before I ended up on council. So, so yes, I will continue to pitch for my 1%. I will not hold it against council if they say not this year.
And in many ways, I agree with you. We're right, we're behind the curve. I understand. I just see that borrowing to save a percent out of the contingency so that we can bring the tax rate down and then to add 1% just kind of doesn't really work with me. Now I do have another question. We also have an urban infrastructure reserve. What do, what is that specified for? May I ask that?
You construct.
Well, I get that. Does, does that count for sidewalks?
It's, it's been used in the past for Main Street. I remember some of the electrical on Main Street being done with the contingency. We've used it for the Stormwater Master Plan. We've used it for anything that's urban-related.
So sidewalks, traffic lights? Might take 80,000 out of the urban infrastructure for the traffic lights and save your.
Okay, so it's after 6:30, our council meeting's, council meeting's supposed to be starting and the mayor's getting antsy because he likes the microphone. So would we like to, are we ready to continue this and get to a, a decision tonight? I would like to see it done. Are we able to continue or what would we like to do? Any suggestions? I'm going to start with you.
I'm, I'm thinking we have two-line items to talk about. They're both 80,000. I think we can probably get it done tonight and I'm willing to wait to hold the council meeting, see if we can actually get that done.
So, but on that note, we need to just start throwing out what we want. We're, we're doing a lot of back and forth. What do we want?
Hello? You asked?
Yeah, I'm going around, so you're next, go ahead.
I think, I agree with the mayor on this 80,000 for this position. I, I would like to see that position in place because I know there's a lot of work to be done and it's something that's been sort of overlooked for quite a while, so. But I don't agree with adding another percent, as Emily has said, that to go ahead, add another percent for reserve. I think our reserve, categorize it the way you want, but I think our reserves are quite healthy and, and they are moving, continue moving in the right direction. I think we need to do a lot of work this year and we need the people to do it. I, I think if you need to get another percent from the taxpayer this year for a reserve, I think, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with that.
Okay, so in favor of the adding 80,000 for staff, not in favor of the 1%? Councillor Bateman?
I wish you had have started over there because I'm still thinking.
Councillor Rowley? Yes. Um, can I, Linda, if we, if we took, if we took the streetlights and the traffic lights, 76,000, out of the urban infrastructure reserve? That's pretty well 80. And then added the mayor's 1%. 1%.
And then added the mayor's 1%, 1% roads reserve thing or whatever the-
Just for the record, this is not my 1%, all right? There's some monies that would go to infrastructure at some point in the future, not, not Brian Ostrander in Mexico.
The mayor's suggestion of adding another-
You want to add it, though.
Yes. And I, and I'm, and I'm for starting to get ahead of the curve, and I think we're going to be more than five years to get ahead of the curve, I understand that. But if we were to trade off, to take some of that, because that, if I looked at that urban infrastructure, there's $900,000 in there also, give or take, right? So could we take that out and then offset that with your 1%, with your suggestion, not your money, your suggestion of the 80,000? Would that keep us kind of where we are?
Did we want the suggestion of the staffing addition as well, or?
Yeah. Well, you already have that, right?
Was that a consensus already?
Not, not yet. So we've got a number of things going on.
Yeah.
We should get a consensus. I, I know you're trying to trade off things, and it's hard to make a decision unless we know that we're trading something off, and I get that. I'd like to get an idea, are we in favor of adding 80,000 into the budget for a staff member? We haven't decided what. Are we in favor of that, of the 80, the majority? Just, I'm getting a show of hands.
No, no, I want to talk.
I understand that. Okay. But I believe there's a majority of people who are, there are a majority of council members who are saying yes to the 80,000. I saw at least three hands, myself included, that's four.
Which project took 4.87?
Yes. So we're going to say yes to that. And now we're going to talk-
One clarification, though. That 80,000, is that for public works or?
We haven't decided that yet. We're just adding an earmark so that we can have those discussions later on in the year, and then we have something in the budget for it.
Maybe two halves. We don't know yet. Just so that we can have that discussion on, on those, those two positions later on and, and still have something earmarked for it.
I, I wouldn't mind adding it in right now, but I definitely am not going for this kind of a tax increase, plus the mayor says it's not his 1%, but he's suggesting it.
Okay.
And I'd like to do this, but if you want to get on with council, I think we need to defer this and come back and have more deliberation. So if I could get somebody to second it, I would like to defer this to another meeting.
Do we have a second or to defer?
I'll second. Not to another meeting. Can we continue after the other meeting?
The motion is to defer to another meeting. Do you want to second it?
No.
Do I have a second or? I'll second that. And we'll decide later?
Yeah. And I'd like to, I'd like to adjourn this meeting and-
And you're going to second that?
We'll finish this today. We're going to finish this today. I will. It's got to be finished, can't keep it going.
Okay, so I have a motion moved by Councilor Tadman and seconded by Councilor Anderson that the committee, the whole budget of April 1st, 2018, adjourn at 6:44 PM. All those in favor? And we'll take a five-minute break.